Okay, so let's get started. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act PO 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice to this regular meeting of the planning board of the township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Jennifer Ragnow asked to be excused. Councilman Barson?
Yeah.
Coral Hauck?
Here.
Mihail Rafik? Theodore Chase?
Here.
Gustavo Mansory?
Yeah.
Charles Brown?
Here.
Robert Thomas?
Here.
Sammy Chavon?
Here.
And Chairman Mercini?
Here.
Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to our planning board attorney to explain what will go on tonight.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out. There is one matter on the agenda this evening. There will be two opportunities for public comment. The first one on the agenda, which is listed before the discussion item, is public comment on any matter other than the discussion item currently listed on the agenda. There will be an opportunity, following the presentation in that discussion, for the public to have comment on that application. As indicated, there is one matter on the agenda. It's a discussion item consisting of an informal presentation from Levin Properties to request a zone change for the property at 940 Eastern Avenue to permit a 200-unit apartment complex. As such a matter is, this type of matter is not something typically entertained by the board. I think it's beneficial to outline the nature of the informal presentation. The presenter will provide information to the board regarding the request for the zone change. The general public will be permitted to make comments regarding the request. As the board may be asked to take some action on this matter in the future, the board members will make no comment, nor will they ask any questions of the presenter or the general public. The board's role for tonight is to sit and listen to the presentation and the public comment. At the completion of the presentation and public comment, the board will take no action regarding the presentation. Typically, an informal presentation, such as the one being entertained by the board this evening, does not include a public comment section. However, in an attempt to provide the general public with an opportunity to offer its opinion regarding the request, the board has decided to permit a public comment section to occur. Each member of the public will be permitted three minutes to make comment concerning the presentation. The board will reserve the right to limit or end public comment should the public comments become repetitive and/or unproductive. Should a member wish to concur with comments previously made, it would be suggested that they indicate this during the opportunity to speak rather than supply a lengthy repetitive statement. Please note that the public comment section is designed to permit an opportunity for individuals to bring information to the attention of the presenter and the board. The board will respect the public's time by refraining from comment until the speaker is finished. If it is further noted, excuse me, it is further noted that the public comment section is not structured as a question-and-answer section, thus neither the board nor the presenter will provide a response to questions made by the public. Instead, the board will listen and focus on the comments being made by the public, as this is your opportunity to provide input on the matter. I'd like to thank you all for your anticipated cooperation during tonight's presentation. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Peter. So with that, we'll make a motion to open to the public for any general planning comment not related to the Levin Properties discussion, and you will be limited to three minutes for those comments. So with that, I make a motion to open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and so the public is now welcome to make any general planning comment. Can you please use a microphone?
Sorry, is it on?
I believe you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry. My name is Lorraine Suarez. I live at 1220 Easton Avenue in Somerset. I've been a resident here for 43 years, and I was wondering if the planning of the zoning board or has?
Planning board.
Planning board, sorry, has any jurisdiction over the bike path that runs from 287 through, I guess, Foxwood Lane, Foxwood Road? It's deteriorated terribly since it's been installed 40 years ago. When I bought my home, Eastern Avenue was a single lane in either direction with no dividers, and it's turned into a nightmare. And I need to know if anyone here can help get the bike paths maintained by either the township or the county. I've been told by the county it's the township's responsibility. I've been told by the township that it's the county's responsibility. So here we are with a very, very bad road, very bad bike path, and nobody seems to care about maintaining it. And it's actually the main street into our town, and it's an absolute disgrace. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. No one else indicating that they wish to come forward and move to close the general public comment section?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and so we'll turn our discussion to tonight's matter.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and township staff. And ladies and gentlemen, thank you for taking the opportunity tonight to listen to this presentation. I am John Wisneski of Wisneski &amp; Associates. I represent the applicant, Levin Management. And just to put on the record, this is about the property at 940 Eastern Avenue at the corner of Kennedy. It's a 27-acre property. This process that we are here tonight making the informal presentation for information purposes, so that members of this board, members of the township staff, anyone who may be listening, can have a clear idea of what we're proposing, why we're proposing it, and what the alternatives are. It's interesting to note that this is a process that is almost at its three-year anniversary. My clients and I met with the township in the middle of the pandemic, so it was via Zoom or one of those platforms, back in December 2019. And we had additional meetings in June of 2020 and also a meeting in 2021. Those were meetings to inform staff about what we were thinking about, to take feedback about the process and the preferred ways of making applications, which led us ultimately to filing a application before the zoning board of adjustment, which had been scheduled to be heard in January of 2022. Shortly before that January 2022 meeting, the municipal governing body adopted a resolution opposing the application. And as a consequence, the applicant decided to withdraw that application out of prudence. Number one, if a municipal board receives word from a governing body that we think that this is an abrogation of zoning power, the applicant quite naturally expects that there's a lot of money involved in putting on an application. If we're going into this with the opinion that this is an abrogation, why are we doing this? Let's first make our case about the merits of this before actually going before a dispositive board. And so that's why it was withdrawn and then scheduled for tonight with this informal application. So I wanted to put that on the record because I think it's important for those who are listening to understand that this is not something that was done, you know, on the spur of the moment. It was not something that was done stealthily. It was something that was done over a long period of time with consultation. What my client, Levin, is asking is for this board to consider a rezoning of this property, which is in the GB zone. So the request essentially would be to modify in some respect the GB zone. Now, I'm sure you're aware that the GB zone at one point in time did allow for residential, and then there was an amendment a number of years ago, I don't know exactly when, that took that residential component out. Back when that occurred, there were reasons for it. But as everybody who serves on a planning board knows, that the planning process is not static. And the reasons that existed five years ago or 10 years ago to make a decision are not necessarily static reasons that are immutable, and times change and circumstances change. And I think that's the important underpinning of this application and what you will hear from the witnesses, what's changed. E-commerce has changed. And so in the past, when people used to actually get in their car, go to stores, people do that less frequently now. And then we had a pandemic, which gave a boost to e-commerce and gave a negative to brick-and-mortar retail. And so those twin factors could not have been envisioned when the governing body and this board many years ago decided to change the zone to exclude residential. However, these factors now weigh in and offer the governing body and this board an opportunity to consider, how do we address this change in circumstance? And so, you know, there are a number of ways of doing it that avoid spot zoning, that's getting into the weeds, and we're not going to do that today. We want to give an overview. There's currently, and you all know this, a big box retail site in Rutgers Plaza, it's over 100,000 square feet, that used to house the Kmart. And long before that, for those who remember, grants. And that site, when Kmart and its parent corporation ran into financial trouble and they ultimately declared bankruptcy, the bankruptcy court abrogated all their leases. And so since then, this property has not had a tenant for that. And you will hear testimony from Levin talking about the efforts that have been undertaken since that time to this day, and what those efforts have generated. I want to point out that this issue that is facing Levin in Franklin Township is not unique and it's not isolated to this township. One only need look at newspaper articles. Just the other day, there was a story, "The Lord &amp; Taylor Downtown Westfield is now under consideration by their board for redevelopment as a mixed-use development with residential component." The Sears on Route 1, not far from here that we've probably all shopped in, now closed, is under consideration for redevelopment in New Brunswick with a mixed-use parcel being partly residential and commercial. And the Lord &amp; Taylor in Woodbridge Center, one of the largest regional malls of the state, they have not been able to find a tenant for that Lord &amp; Taylor. Woodbridge Township is now entertaining changing the use of that building to be non-retail. And so what's happening here is not in isolation. It's happening across the state, and I would argue, across the country. And so this is an opportunity to understand those changes and for Franklin to embrace those changes and do something that I think we all agree in, all right? We've heard the comments that have been made online at council meetings about this application, about preserving the retail space at Rutgers Plaza. Well, here's the thing, we do too. Levin is a company that operates retail centers. But there's more than one way of saving and enhancing and preserving a retail center. This is one alternate way, not unique for us, as I've said. You've seen it in Westfield, you've seen it in New Brunswick, you're seeing it in Woodbridge, and so it's something for consideration here. Finally, these things that are happening, both market-driven by applicants in various towns, by us, are not unnoticed by the state of New Jersey. Senator Troy Singleton has introduced Senate Bill 2103 that would give, or that would actually provide an exception from municipal zoning for conversions of retail centers or office space that have been unused for a certain period of time, over a certain size, to allow them to be converted into mixed use. And so while we're making this presentation tonight, and similar presentations are being made in other municipalities, this is something that the state of New Jersey is considering in changing the municipal land use law that would allow this as well. We have a number of people who are going to testify tonight and counsel. Since this is informal, I'm not sure if you want them sworn or not. Okay.
They need to be sworn.
Okay. So starting off, we'll have Sidney Singer from Levin Management. He's the vice president of leasing. And as you know, this has a residential component, and we've partnered with Kaplan Companies. After that, we'll have Jason Kaplan, the president and CEO of Kaplan. Then two tenants who are in Rutgers Plaza. The real estate director for Stop &amp; Shop, Roberta Hammer, and the owner and operator of Venus Jewelers, Peter Stravavandis, will also provide their opinions about this. Then we have Christopher Otto, who is the managing partner and chief appraiser for Otto Group. And he's going to talk about how the market has changed and how the economics have changed and what is happening in the industry, not just for this property. And you'll see that this is in keeping with the trends that are developing nationally. We then have Kate Keller of Phillips Price. She's going to address the planning issues with regard to making the change that we propose. Finally, or not finally, next we have Scott Turner of Menlo Engineering. He'll actually get to the layout and the site plan of what we've proposed so that you can understand how this is designed and how this reduces impervious coverage. And so an area that is very sensitive to runoff because of the presence of the Delaware and Raritan Canal, this project will reduce the impervious coverage of this parking lot, of this site, which is a net win for the municipality. Then we'll have Carl Penkey of Langen Engineering. He's going to talk about the traffic issues because we've heard concerns about what kind of traffic this will generate. And then finally, we'll have Charles Chappell of Minnewaska. They're the architects, and they'll show you exactly what this building will look like. And I should point out, he'll not only show you what the proposed building will look like, but part of this proposal is an entire rehab of the facade of the remainder of that shopping center. And so this will be one consistent look, not only a new building, but essentially a totally revitalized shopping center. So with that, I am going to stop my presentation, and I'm going to ask Sidney Singer to come up from Levin Management.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. My name is Sidney Singer. I'm the vice president of Levin Management, and I've been with Levin for about four and a half years now. Just wanted to share with you some information pertaining to Rutgers Shopping Center.
Mr. Singer, can you please make sure that you're speaking directly into the mic so the recording secretary can get the words? Thanks.
Absolutely. I apologize. Is that better? Is that better? Okay, thank you. Rutgers Center was developed in the early '70s by Levin Properties. It originally included a WT Grand Store, a General Cinema movie theater, a supermarket, and a number smaller shops based offering retail products and services in suburban Franklin Township. Over the years, Kmart assumed the WT Grand Store, and after General Cinema closed their theater, the center underwent a redevelopment and renovation in 2001 through 2005, which included demolition of the theater and construction of a new freestanding 74,000-square-foot Stop &amp; Shop supermarket and a Chase Bank bat. In 2018, early 2018, Levin was concerned about the future of the nearly 100,000-square-foot Kmart store. Based on reported sales performance of Rutgers Plaza store and the eventual bankruptcy filing of Sears, the parent company of Kmart, Levin's leasing team began to market the space to potential Big Box anchor stores as well as junior anchors prior to Kmart's eventual closing. I actually assumed the responsibility of leasing for the center back in April when I joined Levin Management. April of 2018. Mr. Singer? Yes. The microphone is extremely directional, so you have to make sure that you have it right in front of your mouth. Sorry. It makes a big difference if you're an inch or two away. Thank you. Is that better? Yes. Sorry, I apologize. In May of 2020, I had assumed a promotion with Levin Management as VP of Leasing, and I assigned that property to another agent within our company, and I continue to oversee the leasing efforts there today. Our team consists of five full-time agents, and we focus on retailer expansion, retailer relocation, and of course, retention. Our leasing team is very active in New Jersey. In 2021, Levin Management procured over 1.2 million square feet of leasing transactions. Our team continues to market the former Kmart box and adjacent space to potential anchors and junior anchors, ranging from 20,000 square feet to 80,000 square feet. Backfilling spaces like these former Kmart boxes have many components, such as the current post-pandemic economy and the e-commerce economy. More than ever, retailers rely mainly on analytics and no longer go with their gut feelings as to the likely success of a potential location or locations. Frankly, our belief, or anybody else's belief, matters much to these retailers. If the analytics do not check all of the boxes, retailers today simply will move on to other locations that do. We have continually kept in touch with all of the potential anchor and junior anchors that are in the New Jersey retail markets.
Sid, if I could just interrupt you. You talked about the statistics that the retailers look at. You can provide the board with a kind of a highlight of some of those statistics in terms of traffic to this site versus other sites.
Absolutely, yes. So one of the analytic components is a report that's issued by Placer AI, and they track, they track mainly through mobile devices that visit various shopping centers. And to give you an idea of what the last 12 months look like in comparison to other centers, in Rutgers Plaza, over the past 12 months, there was roughly 800,000 visits at Rutgers Plaza. In comparison, there were 6.8 million shoppers to visit Bridgewater Commons, 2.4 million in North Brunswick's Walmart, and 1.7 in nearby Piscataway Walmart. Gives you an idea of the variation.
Thank you. We get a lot of feedback from our relationships with tenants, that we have established relationships over many years, seven decades. I am involved in a lot of those presentations and discussions on a daily basis. We get continuous feedback from these retailers. First is having to do with the retail corridor on Eastern Avenue. It's viewed as a secondary market, and it's sandwiched between stronger markets, stronger retail trade markets such as Bridgewater, East Brunswick, North Brunswick, and to a lesser extent, Piscataway. All of the potential anchors and junior anchors do extensive market analysis, including cannibalization studies, which is the impact of adding a new store or stores will have on existing markets or trades within that market. Since COVID, these anchors are looking less and less potential locations, and their market studies are always focused on sales projections, both for in-store and e-commerce that will be generated from that new location. All of these competing trade areas are within 15- to 20-minute drive time of Rutgers Plaza. Most of the potential replacement anchors as well as junior anchors already have stores located in these well-established nearby trade areas, where there's a critical mass of other retailers. Despite our efforts since 2018, we have just not found any demand for this location to date for replacement anchors or junior anchors. An example of this is a couple of retailers such as At Home or Florin Decor. Florin Decor outright rejected the market, while At Home, which is a Texas-based retailer, they have 235 stores nationally, five that are located here in New Jersey, expressed serious interest. They even toured the market with their CEO. However, after a deeper look at the surrounding markets, they decided that Rutgers Plaza is not regional enough, and therefore they're going to focus on these other retail hubs that I mentioned above. Another issue with the existing Kmart box, it's just obsolete. It's roughly 350 feet of frontage. And it's very deep. It's about 315 feet deep. Today's anchor stores do not focus on stores that are that deep or that narrow. An example of that is Home Depot and Lowe's. They require 500 feet of frontage, no less. We just cannot accommodate those kind of retailers. We don't have the frontage. Most anchors or junior anchors require at least 200 feet of store, about 200 feet of store depth, with a clear ceiling height of a minimum of not less than 19 feet. We had hired an architect to create renderings and new configurations of the Kmart box to reduce the depth as a marketing tool for leasing, and still could not find anchor or junior anchor interest. While the site is significantly challenged by limited visibility from the two adjacent streets, which are very important to retailers, at its proximity to the Delaware and Raritan Canal, we were confronted with other major changes revolving in the retail market. Pre-COVID, there was already an increasing trend towards more e-commerce and less brick-and-mortar stores. COVID accelerated this trend. In 2019, 11% of all retail stores in the U.S. were done through the internet. This year, it's projected to reach 15% and will continue to grow. This trend has made new site selection for anchor stores much more challenging, and they must more closely evaluate potential sales for new store locations, along with the negative impact that new store may have on existing stores in nearby trade areas and the impact of e-commerce. And while the e-commerce trends suggest a need for more shopping center owners find more internet-proof retailers like entertainment, personal service, restaurants, these categories were dramatically hit hard by COVID over the past 18 months. I should also mention that all of the major cinema chains who are on our target list have stopped opening new locations. Based on all these factors, we have not found any junior anchor or anchor stores interested in the former Kmart box. We remain committed to preserving a retail at Rutgers Plaza, but we need to have another anchor store to accomplish that. We cannot continue to have a vacant 100,000-square-foot obsolete building that's not leaseable. Our existing retailers are committed to Rutgers Plaza. We are as well. We signed a new lease with McDonald's to take the old Burger King building. Chase Bank, Crunch Fitness, Dollar Tree, Morales Village, and T-Mobile all have extended their leases on long-term basis, and Venus Jewelry is posed to relocate, expand, and extend their lease as well. As an agent and VP of Leasing, I'm very concerned that without this newly proposed anchor, Rutgers Plaza will be faced with new vacancy that will see the same fate as Kmart has seen for the past four-plus years: dark, vacant, unleaseable, without any viable anchors to support the retail component. Based on all this background, Levin started looking for alternative uses to the Kmart box about two years ago. We felt that this was important to replace the customer traffic generated by anchor stores with another use that would bring regular foot traffic to the center in order to keep the remaining stores in the center viable. Among those available options, an office building was not considered due to the excessive vacancy rate already in the market surrounding Rutgers Plaza. The best use for the Kmart box is to consider residential as part of the mixed-use development. The residential component would serve as a second anchor to the Stop &amp; Shop and other retailers. At the same time, we were continuing our retail leasing efforts and reaching out to potential residential developers to gauge their interest. Stop &amp; Shop contacted us about their concern of the future of the shopping center. Their sales were affected by Kmart's closing, and their lease was coming up for renewal in a few years, and they had noted other vacancies in the center. Our other small shop space, Rutgers Plaza, has become harder to keep occupied after Kmart closed. We discussed the idea of adding residential component to the center as a replacement anchor, and Stop &amp; Shop has embraced that concept. They feel that adds more good, regular supermarket customers to the center, like a retail anchor, and they understand that the location of Rutgers Plaza is not in demand amongst replacement anchor stores and junior anchors. In short, our proposed redevelopment is an appropriate transformation of an older, struggling retail center to modernize mixed-use development. The current site lends itself to this based on the existing parking fields, which is sometimes a challenge in other mixed-use development, where different uses competing for the same parking area. In Rutgers Plaza, there is a defined and adequate parking field for the residential component, while the retail buildings have defined an adequate parking for their customers. Adding a new anchor as a residential component will revitalize the existing retail space and provide an opportunity for the center to get leased up for the long-term future. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sid. As you heard the testimony from Sid, that Levin is a retail-commercial landlord. So for this proposal to develop the residential side, they recognize that they need to find a partner with strengths in that area, and our next witness will be Jason Kaplan of the Kaplan Companies, who's the president and CEO.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing our testimony tonight. My name is Jason Kaplan. I'm the president of Kaplan Companies. We are a predominantly residential developer. We are based We are based just across the river in Highland Park, started by my grandfather back in 1952, and similar to Levin, we're celebrating our 70th year in business. We entitle land in-house, we develop in-house, we manage in-house, and it's a family-owned business. Our philosophy is to build and hold. We've never sold properties that we've developed. They call it generational builders, where we build for the long term. We build higher quality, we build first-class, we build properties that we look to hold for my future generations of our family. We were, I guess, started discussions with Levin, and the property really interested us because of, you know, we're very selective with the projects we do. This excited us because of the mixed-use nature, which is a trend that's going on not only in New Jersey but across the country. We're very selective with the projects we do, and we only really do projects that excite us in this state. We just saw a great opportunity, a great location, where we know the market well. We own about 5,000 units within the central Jersey area, so we know that where retail's not in high demand, residential is in high demand. We own a lot of units in the area, we understand the market, we've designed, as our consultants will show you, a first-class project with all the latest amenities and all the demands of hotel-style development, which is different than more garden-style apartments that I think mostly dominate the area. So, it's really, you know, we were very excited about the project, you know, the initial reaction from the township that, you know, it was acceptable, excited us. So, I guess, you know, with that, we hope that you are, you know, pleased with what we presented to you. But also, I just wanted to note that we didn't just look at this building as a standalone, but we discussed incorporating it into the whole project, so that it wasn't just a residential project with a standalone retail. But we incorporated a redesign of the circulation within the site, we redesigned, we worked with Levin to make the retail function a little more open for outdoor space, for farmer markets, for other community activities, for customers of the center, but also for expanded use of the restaurant, so.
Mr. Kaplan, can you just describe for the board some of the amenities and some of the things that are envisioned for this building?
Sure. So, the way we envision building the property is in one building. They'll show you it's an E-shaped configuration, but we're including high-end amenities that tenants really require these days, which are pools, fitness center, lounges, and a lot of, it's community living. So, you really feel like you're living in a luxury hotel, country club kind of lifestyle, elevator buildings, interior corridors. We have our own 24-hour maintenance staff that will live on-site. We have our own staff for management that will be on-site as well.
And will you be doing anything about the future of transportation with electric charging stations?
Oh, yeah, of course. That's a state requirement now, but we've actually been exceeding what the state requirements are, so that, you know, we recognize the increased demand for it, and we, since we are generational holders, it's much more economical to put those electric charging stations and stuff up front, rather than trying to retrofit in the future.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your testimony. As you heard from Mr. Singer, Stop &amp; Shop has an interest in what we're doing here, and I'd like to call up to say a few words the director of real estate development for Stop &amp; Shop, Roberta Hamer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Roberta Hamer, H-A-M-E-R. I am the director of real estate development for Stop &amp; Shop. I have been with the company for over four years. Prior to that, I have been a shopping center developer for over 30 years. As Mr. Singer spoke earlier, we and Levin management have been in discussions with regard to the proposed project. We embrace what is being proposed on the table. We feel that the residential component would bring a great variety of foot traffic to the shopping center, which would bring life to what is now a very dead end of the property. It is becoming what we seem to feel an eyesore, because there is no traffic, and the building has been sitting there for quite some time. As Mr. Singer did say, and I can back him up on this, in the retail industry right now, you're not finding big-box retail replacement like you had back in the early 2000s. Our entire industry has changed because of e-commerce and the Amazons of the world, and the developers are having a hard time finding these big users to occupy the old dinosaurs of the era, such as the Kmart's and the Sears. And you have to get creative and think outside of the box and be able to bring new life to the center. And as our industry changes, we have to be a little bit more open to the ideas of change and embrace the change. We don't see a problem with the residential, provided that the layout and everything works, and what we've seen so far has worked. But I think it would be a great addition to the shopping center and a great addition to the town.
Ms. Hamer, one question. If the center were just to stay with a big, empty Kmart vacant box, how does that impact Stop &amp; Shop?
It could be a decline of sales, and it could impact our business overall and change our mind of staying within the shopping center.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call up Peter Stavriandis, who is the principal of Venus Jewelers. Peter?
Thank you, John. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. We have been a retail store in Rutgers Plaza for the last 43 years. We are a fifth-generation family jeweler, and we serve Franklin Township, the surrounding towns, and many clients come from North Jersey, South Jersey, to do business with us. I can tell you without any reservation, and I think John Wisniewski was very eloquent explaining, the need for this mixed use for where retail and residential environments can mix and make a harmonious partnership, more beneficial, more progressive, and more safe. Rutgers Plaza is one of those shopping centers that needs this enhancement desperately. The landlord of Rutgers Plaza has done anything possible to revitalize this premier retail space, employing all methods known to the commercial estate industry. And I can say that a few years ago, when Mr. Sid Singer started working for Levin, I had breakfast with him at Somerset Diner, and I said, Sid, what's going to happen with this big box? And he was kind enough to reveal to me, he took out papers, and he said, we're making a division, because it has been impossible to rent a whole space, but we're trying to rent it individually in three different... So, that said, without going into further details, and then other evidence that I've seen over the years, I can say in front of you without any hesitation that a lot of attempts have been made by the landlord to create an environment for a big, a big commercial store to come in. So, that said, the only hope for this center to resurrect itself is to employ this kind of format. If nothing takes place and everything remains the same, the shopping center would decline and will cease to exist. So, I'm here in front of you. John, do you want to say something?
No, no.
I'm here in front of you, not only as a business owner located in Rutgers Plaza, but also as an involved citizen, a community leader, if you will. The Chamber of Commerce, the Chamber of Commerce is in favor of the continuation of communication between the two parties for a beneficial agreement to take place. And in my view, most of the opposition that came to my attention is based on hearsay, assumptions, and not really facts based on scientific data, which was mentioned before. So, and I believe that Levin can supply you with all the necessary evidence. So, becoming, closing, becoming an obstacle for progress to take place, and small businesses to survive, is not something that the residents and the leadership of this township can afford to have in their resume. Thank you so much.
Peter, before you go, one quick question. What's your concern if the big former Kmart box stays vacant?
Well, as I mentioned in my brief statement, I think there's going to be a gradual decline of the shopping center. One of the anchor stores might leave, so that's your answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, next I'd like to call up Christopher Otto, managing partner and chief appraiser for the Otto Group.
Hello, how are you? My name is Christopher Otto. I am, as he said, third generation in Otto Group now. We are the largest real estate consulting and valuation firm in New Jersey, and we represent a lot of municipalities' government on studies such as redevelopment, repurposing. So, our goal here tonight, our task was to conduct a study and look at what the use of this center is now, and what it will be if you don't take positive further action. Some of the things I'm going to say here are not going to be popular, which is pretty common with my speech, unfortunately, because a lot of people don't want to hear the truth of what's really going to happen. But if the board and the town does not get proactive about a proposal like this here today, in the next near future, it could be five years and 10 years, you're going to be hearing a proposal about the entire shopping center, because it's going to be dead. It's going to be vacant. It's certain death for the shopping center. Those are the retail trends. That's the direction this is going, right? If we just look at some simple, quick facts here about this area and the retail vacancy that we have, and the growing vacancy, in three-mile radius alone of this area, we have 228,000 square feet currently on the market. That's double what we should have, right, of retail. If you go to three miles, I mean, if you go to five miles, you have 700,000. You go to 10 miles, you have 2.6 million square feet. That's more than triple what we should have. If you go to Somerset County, we have 1.3 million square feet right now on the market. The idea that this is going to remain a retail, and it's going to be successful and re-leasing as retail, it's just not going to happen, unfortunately. So, what we did was, we want to look at some of the future trends here, such as, I represent the town of Westfield, and looking at their redevelopment, they're being proactive. How are they going to take a site that needs to be repurposed and be proactive in that, right? Downtown Burnsville, right? Downtown Burnsville is dying, right? I live in Burnsville, it's my town, right? The downtown is dying, our retail is dying. We are fighting tooth and nail right now to be able to get apartments downtown, when before they didn't want them, because they didn't act soon enough. Our grocery store, Kings, left. We have a vacant Kings in our town now for two years. Everyone said it would never be vacant. It's vacant, right? Along with a lot of other stores in our town. Now, they're proposing apartments downtown, and we're trying to get it done, because we need that injection of induced demand. We need the shoppers, we need the household spending power to be able to support the East Brunswick, I represent the city of East Brunswick in their, in the town of East Brunswick, of their Route 18 redevelopment. Very controversial. They took a whole retail center that was dead, and now we're putting up a massive apartment complex, but they did it in such a way that it's going to help the rest of the retail of Route 18 be successful, right? That's what the goal is. The goal is to be proactive and to approach this in such a way that you're not looking at it as, okay, now we need to redevelop the entire center. There's a little unknown clause a lot of people don't know about in leases for shopping centers. If your anchor leaves, just about every tenant can cancel their lease, right? So, in a lot of shopping centers across the state of New Jersey, what we have seen when we saw a well-known shopping center, a well-known grocery store anchor close about five, six years ago, was every store in that center canceled their lease within 30 days. So, if Stop &amp; Shop leaves, or a major anchor leaves, a lot of these leases here, the tenants can just leave automatically, because that's what's drawing people into the center. Kmart was drawing people into the center, right? The idea of putting a mixed-use project here brings what we call that induced demand in here. When we look at how to save retail, we look at what's the buying power? How much money does the average household spend on retail? And the only way to save the retail is to inject more households within a close walking distance of there. So, if you look at a very proactive project, I don't know if you guys are familiar with Jack Cust down in Hunterdon County, but Jack Cust took his retail shopping center, I believe it's a Stop &amp; Shop there as well, and it was a struggling overall center, and he went to the town, and he owns a gym there called Health Quest. He went to the town, he said, I want to build two apartment complexes, 139 units and 1260 units. And the town said, no way, we're not doing that. You know, we're not doing this over here in our retail shopping center. Well, they're built. The first one's built, extremely successful, the retail is booming, right? Because everyone's walking to the shopping center, getting their groceries, and walking home. That's the trend. The trend is this, it's called urbanizing suburbia. You're not going to like that term either, probably. But the trend is that people want to be able to come home on a Friday, and what if they don't want to get in their car until Monday, right? What if they want to walk to the grocery store, right? Or walk to the liquor store? Or walk over here? That's what we need to start providing in our towns, if you want to attract the younger people in, right? These younger tenants that are coming in here, they are your home buyers, right? So, if you understand the cycle of a real estate closing, if I'm buying my first house, that same money transacts nine times in one day. Do you know that? So, my money that goes to one closing goes to nine other closings. It's a cycle, and the top end trades down. So, what happens when you inject an entire group of first-time potential home buyers into a town? You now have almost 200 households that could be first-time home buyers, as they settle in a town, like a town, and then move in to buy. That's the trend. That's what they do, right? So, overall, let me see if I have any other notes here, if I covered everything. No, I think I pretty much covered everything here that I wanted to say. So, we did conduct a very detailed analysis here, and if this goes to a formal application, we'll be happy to provide our report, the support, and all the numbers for it. I think some of you know me here, I've presented in front of the board here. I actually represented the town for a couple of years, and thank you very much.
Chris, thank you very much. I'd next like to call up for some planning testimony Kate Keller of Phillips Price.
Hi, good evening, chairman, members of the board. My name is Kate Keller. I'm a principal with the firm of Phillips Price Greigl Laney Hughes LLC, based in Hoboken. And, you know, without reiterating our prior testimony tonight, I just wanted to briefly go through, you know, how this, what we're asking for tonight, how the impact of your master plan in over the last 10 years or so, what that would have on it, and also practically how this type of rezoning might affect both this property and other properties in the GB zone throughout the township. So, first of all, you know, what we're proposing tonight is the type of mixed-use option that will specifically support the existing tenants in the shopping center. The bottom line is that this property is facing challenges, and it will continue to face challenges without some type of significant intervention. And that's, you know, just covering the testimony that you've already heard. recovering the testimony that you've already heard. And in this case, you know, there, you've, you've heard that the, this type of new use in the shopping center can support Stop &amp; Shop, it can support any number of existing or new small businesses by really compensating for the vacancies that have been created by the current retail market, and in this case, Kmart in particular. And, you know, these market conditions are emblematic of broader trends throughout the state, throughout the region, but here we're talking about this site. And so, you know, just to discuss, as Mr. Waznewski brought up in his introduction, there was a zoning change made in, to the overall GB zone in about 2012, 2013, based on a master plan amendment. And what that did is that it recommended that two residential uses that had been permitted in the GB zone be eliminated, and those were garden apartments and those were townhouses. Because at that time, they were essentially determined to no longer be appropriate for the GB general business zone and basically inconsistent with the intent of the zone, which was to provide retail opportunities. So that zoning change was enacted, but in this case, you know, this is a situation where, first of all, the mask, this was over almost 10 years ago, and the master plan is intended to be a dynamic, evolving document, supposed to reflect current conditions in the community, and that's why both the MLUL requires that it be updated every 10 years, and why your township planner, you know, frequently goes back, goes back and looks at these things. But in this case, you know, the GB zone has not specifically been looked at really since that 2012 master plan amendment, besides, you know, your general reexamination report that was done in 2016. But so, in this case, you know, what we're looking at is not only the change in market conditions that has already been set forth tonight, but really, this is kind of a different type of residential use than what was previously looked at for this zone and determined to not be appropriate. Those were really all-or-nothing types of uses, where if a site was developed for a townhouse or a garden apartments, it was not going to be a retail site, it was not going to be a commercial site. Mixed use was never contemplated at that time. And, you know, so now we're here 10 years later, where all these changes to the retail economy, and this is a mixed-use development that is being proposed specifically to support retail, and specifically to support the continued retail use of this property. So, and, you know, I would just point to that then, 10 years ago as of now, the intent of the GB zone is to provide business and commercial uses for the local traveling public, and to preserve and enhance commercial, financial, retail, and similar services. And I think that, you know, clearly what's going, what's being proposed here was part of the mixed-use development to support the retail, is not the same as having, using a retail site for residential uses at the expense of overall township retail. So that's, I think, a distinction there. And then I would also just want to sum up and just say, as far as the actual mechanisms that could be used to, to allow this development to go forward, changing the use of this property to allow mixed use would not compromise the entirety of the GB zone. You know, there are, without amounting to spot zoning, there are a number of mechanisms that can be put in place, you know, that, that your planner, the planning board, you as the, you know, the, the folks guiding planning in this township can all look at all of the potential options, whether that's allowing a new type of conditional use, whether it's like looking at creating a new type of zone or limiting to what it would apply, but in no way would, would a change of the zone here result in this type of development being allowed at every single GB property throughout the township, which, you know, which, you know, without knowing what those properties look like, you know, that's not necessarily appropriate, and that's not what we're proposing here. We're looking at this one site tonight. And, you know, just, just to summarize, I think that this is, this is something that also, to go back to your 2016 master plan, this is a proposal that really, that really would effectuate some of the goals that were also stated there, which is to, you know, maintain the density, it means to maintain diversity of housing by encouraging infill development, concentrating commercial development in places where it can be supported by residential development, and most importantly, you know, supporting the redevelopment of declining areas, and this is a shopping center that has been suffering decline. So, you know, my, just to conclude, I think that when you look at your master planning documentation, this is something where the site and the conditions have changed since the last time it was really examined, and this is a new use that has not previously contemplated, and we, that's why we're asking you to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. The next three witnesses that you'll hear from will actually show you what this site, what we're proposing to do at this site. So next I'd like to call up Scott Turner of Menlo Engineering, and he's going to talk about the layout and the changes to the site as being proposed.
I think we're all set? Okay, good evening, everyone. It is nice to see all of you tonight. My job as the consultant engineer here was to prepare a set of engineering site plans and documents and reports to provide to the municipality as well as other outside agencies to demonstrate compliance and conformance with all of the engineering requirements set forth with a development such as this. I will tell you as a consultant engineer, a project like this, which is a redevelopment of sorts, is sort of a dream project. We're talking about a development here that already has a significant amount of coverage on it, whether it be retail or commercial or whatever space there is. The introduction of the apartment building to take place of the Kmart building, which is located in the lower-left corner of the site, introduces a reduction overall in both impervious coverage and building coverage. The impervious coverage is reduced by approximately 63,700 square feet, and the building coverage is reduced by 47,700 square feet. With those reductions and a reduction in the overall parking demand on the site, while still being compliant with all the necessary standards, we reduce the coverages by approximately 4% overall. And the reason why that's important, obviously, is for what, what I really have to focus on is not only the site geometry and the layout and how the site will function, but also for stormwater management purposes and, and overall infrastructure. And with those reductions, we've been able to document and demonstrate that there obviously will be a decrease in overall runoff from the property, a less of an impact onto Sealy's Brook, which is the wooded area that's on the right-hand side of the property, and then ultimately an overall reduction in discharge to the Delaware and Raritan Canal. We've done a lot of work on this property already. We have a fully engineered set of plans and calculations. The project has been submitted to the outside agencies as well, including the DNR Canal Commission. We've received comments and feedback from this project from all of those agencies, and we are to the point now where we are very, very close in receiving our certifications and approvals when the time would be right. In terms of some of the other changes that were being proposed with the application is the entranceway off of Easton Avenue will obviously remain in its current location, the driveway leading up in between the, the vacant Burger King pad, which is on the upper-left, and the Chase Bank, which is on the upper-right, closer to Easton Avenue. That driveway leading up remains the same, gets to the first four-way intersection in the center, which is the accessway from JFK Boulevard. That remains, but then at that point, what we did is we realigned the driveway inside the center, sort of with that S-type configuration, to have it realign itself and bypass the front of the residential building. That was part and parcel with a lot of discussion with your professionals here, and we had also thought that would be beneficial for the overall center, sort of isolate that main driveway from the residential component and have them come in at the next intersection, sort of where the cursor is now. The parking lots will be realigned and reassessed as necessary. Overall parking, like I mentioned, will be reduced by over 100 spaces at least. There will be an introduction of electric vehicle charging stations throughout the site, not only for the residential component, but for the other buildings as well. We've introduced them up at the Stop &amp; Shop parking area, as well as the multi-tenant building that's immediately adjacent to the new residential component on the property. The, the, the area, and what you'll see is, it's sort of an E-shaped type building, as mentioned before, it is a four-story apartment building, 200 units. Those units are going to be comprised of 69 one-bedroom, 123 two-bedroom, and eight three-bedroom units. 20% of those units would be set aside for affordable, so that would be a total of 40 units. And immediately behind that E-shaped building, sort of in the areas in between the legs, are a lot of where the recreational amenities will occur, the outside recreational amenities, which include the pool area on the left-hand leg, as well as some open courtyard space and seating areas, and then on the right-hand side, where the cursor is now, large courtyard areas and open gathering locations as well. The parking lots at the rear of that building right now, which is where all the service spaces for the commercial development will be enhanced and reconfigured with, you know, new parking spaces, ADA-compatible spaces, sidewalks, and accessibility. The, the tenant space, the multi-tenant building immediately to the right, would also include some significant improvements and enhancements from a site engineering standpoint. What you can see on this exhibit is in front of that multi-tenant building, off to the right, Charles, the, the multi-tenant building? There you go. Yeah, so there's a little bit, there's a, the lighter tan is the building itself, and then there's like a darker color tan, that's the existing sidewalk area. And what we did is we took that sidewalk area and we expanded that in front of that building. Right now, currently, it's approximately 13 feet in width from the facade of that building to the curb line. That gets expanded to approximately 30 feet in depth, and what that hopefully would allow to do is to introduce some additional area for pedestrian space, possibly some outdoor seating with a dining establishment of some sort. It really does lend itself to a number of opportunities within that space. So the site improvements overall are certainly not just limited to the residential component on the property. It does go above and beyond that with the additions mentioned for this building itself. Also, what we've done is we've provided complete and comprehensive pedestrian circulation from basically the residential building itself, obviously, to that multi-tenant building, but also to the Stop &amp; Shop supermarket. Very important, obviously, for them to gain access on foot to that supermarket, which is why you see the introduction of that pedestrian walkway. And in addition to that, we've also provided a significant number of additional landscaping enhancements, you know, shade trees, tree trees, flowering trees, hundreds and hundreds of shrubs, and thousands of ground cover plantings that have been presented on the site plan, and that, that is throughout the entire shopping center. And I should mention also that we provided an accessway not only to the shopping, to the Stop &amp; Shop and to the other stores on-site, but there's now also introduced a sidewalk from Easton Avenue to gain access into this center as well. So there's a significant number of improvements that are, that are along with the overall site plan, should, should we, you know, move forward with the application. Last thing I will mention to you is, you know, again, I go back to stormwater management because it is so important and so critical in, in this day and age, and the requirements that we are obligated to meet. This project would absolutely and does comply with all of the most current stormwater management regulations that are in place, dealing with water quantity, water quality, groundwater recharge, and the like. There is certainly water quality enhancements that go along with this application, with the introduction of water quality structures around the new apartment building, which will treat the water before it gets discharged into the Brook.
Scott, there's a green space right to the right of the front door. Can you describe for the board what that is, what it's intended to be?
Yes, so that, that area now, and it's labeled as an open space and event area. There's sidewalk space, that, that kind of circular arc area there is a paver area. We, you know, it's not been completely fleshed out, but it is an open, a large open area that could be utilized for outdoor functions.
And you mentioned in your testimony that the parking quantity is smaller under this proposal than it had been in the past.
That is correct, yes. The, the center right now has a total of 1,257 parking spaces on-site. That number gets reduced to 1,105 parking spaces, which brings it completely into compliance with the New Jersey Residential Site Improvement Standards for the residential component and the, the retail portion as well.
So those residential site improvement standards contemplate a need for fewer vehicles to be parked at a situation like this?
That is correct.
I have no other questions.
Thank you.
Next I'd like to call up Carl Penkey of Langen Engineering, who's going to discuss some of the traffic issues.
Good evening. Again, my name is Carl Penkey with Langen Engineering and Environmental Services. I am an engineer, and by, by training through 35 years, a traffic engineer that has been involved with many projects throughout the state and the country, and mixed-use projects in particular such as this. Rutgers Plaza, as you're aware, is, has, is designed as a retail center. It is designed with access that exists and is handled, high levels of traffic associated with the retail that has historically been on the site, including the 106,000 square feet area that is the subject of where the, the residential is proposed. From a traffic perspective, there's quite a bit of benefit associated with introducing residential into a commercial environment and creating these mixed-used environments. As you've heard easy, earlier, you know, there's certainly a benefit from the, the ability, the, the introduction of, of people 24/7 into this environment that become part of the foot traffic, become part of the, the patrons of the restaurants, services, Stop &amp; Shop that exist in the center, and that's obviously an important part of this. It also, from a traffic standpoint, provides an environment where you don't have to leave the site all the time to find those services, so there's a reduction in traffic associated with that. More, sure, more, more directly though, from a straight comparison standpoint, we're looking at an area of the center that is 106,000 square foot of retail, and really, generically, if, if you looked at the, the options from a traffic standpoint, if, if there was a successful reoccupancy of that space, it would then again generate the high levels of traffic associated with retail use on the site, which I'm sure my client would be happy with, but as you've heard earlier this evening, they've not been successful with that. So the alternative of introducing the residential has the additional benefit aside from creating that internal foot traffic of adding a option on this site, a mixed, a residential option that's less intensive than commercial. Residential is a relatively low to moderate traffic generator as compared to retail, and specifically, to give you some numbers, and these numbers are not opinion or, or, or guesstimates, these are verifiable numbers by your engineering and planning staff. A direct replacement of the 106,000 square foot of retail with 200 residential units results in a net decrease in potential traffic generation from this property during the weekday evening peak hour of over 450 trips an hour. The same thing would occur on a Saturday during a midday shopping period. A direct comparison would result in a reduction of another 450 trips per hour entering and exiting this, 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 the Rutgers Plaza. More importantly, across a typical weekday, retail in that 106,000 square feet of space would generate over 4,800 additional trips a day as compared to the residents in, in this facility, and on a Saturday, close to 6,800 more trips per day. So from a, from a traffic perspective, the introduction of the, the residential into a mixed-use environment creates an opportunity to, to revitalize the center, but with a lower intensity from a trafficking, from a traffic- traffic impact standpoint and flow, onto a center that was designed to accommodate those much higher levels of traffic. And the other benefits that you can see that Scott really just went through is, it results also in a change of how the center is ordered. I think Scott explained very well the other key components that have been added into this site as it becomes a mixed-use development, which is making it a much higher pedestrian-oriented facility with better connectivity for pedestrian flow throughout the site, so that the residents are part of and can share into the services that will be available to them. So from that standpoint, the really, the traffic, from a zoning standpoint, the introduction of residential on this site really is a good story.
Well, thank you for that testimony. We have one final witness, and that's Charles Chapell from Minnewasco, who will show you the architectural renditions. You want me to do this?
Yes, my name is Charles Chapell from Minnewasco, architects and planner at Lambertville, and I'm excited here to kind of show you what is being proposed as far as a multifamily building and revitalization of the retail.
Do you want to speak into the mic, sir?
Sorry, yes, sir. On the first slide you see here on Sheet A1, there's two components that we're talking about. It's the retail component as far as the facade elevation and renovation, and the multifamily building to the left. So what I'd like to do, it's start with the multifamily building. As you can see, this is proposed as a four-story elevator-served multifamily building. It has a lot of amenities, as was spoke about earlier. There's a variety of elements that we wanted to walk through. There's, on the ground floor, there's the much drop-off, there's the main address. Just go back, we're talking a little bit more, it's okay. We'll talk a little bit more about the ground floor and how the building works itself. We wanted to get everybody to understand that this is going to be a nice luxury apartment building with the amenities that were talked about earlier. There's a fitness, there's a club room on the ground floor, there's two entrances, there's the main entrance where there's a simple drop-off. There's also a secondary entrance for convenience for the residents, as well as a move-in area. Both courtyards, there's a one passive and one active courtyard. The courtyard to the left is actually the active courtyard with the pool. It's approximately, to give you an idea of the proportions, it's actually approximately 80 feet by 200 feet. The passive courtyard on the right is actually a park-like setting. So you actually have a variety of tables and chairs and soft seating, potential grill areas. It's really just to give you that feel of that kind of a little serenity space that you have when you get home from work. That's really the intent of this whole concept plan. And as you can see, the parking around the building is actually very adjacent, it's very convenient to get from your car to the security of the building itself as necessary. So, but the building in general, as you can see, it's double-loaded, three long legs that actually kind of create these quaint courtyards. And the floors two through four above work in the exact same way. If you want to just click the next slide, you can see that the floors, remaining floors are the exact same kind of design. Those units that overlook the courtyards actually have these balconies to kind of experience with that little kind of time away, that little getaway as you kind of get home. So as we click again, we can start to go into how the building actually looks, what's being proposed. So this is actually a view from as you kind of drive up from the right, as you're driving to the right side of the building is actually more or less the little central park that's kind of being proposed. And this gives you a good view of the address of the building in general. This is particularly called the Cosmopolitan. Again, you see how it's dropped off, you see the lush landscape, you actually see the materials are very luxurious materials. We're looking at using brick, we're using fiber cement siding, there's a variety of different colors to kind of give you that modern feel that we're actually seeing in the market a lot today. If you go to the next slide, again, you see a better view of the address of the building, that's what we really want. Where this Kmart used to be, now we're actually seeing the Cosmopolitan. You see the rich materials, you see the quality of the building that Kaplan's proposing to be here. So this is just the beginning of what we're doing with the entire site. There's one more perspective that we'd like to go to. Again, this is actually a little bit farther, as we're getting, get closer to the right of the building, you begin to see how it's being logoed, you begin to see, again, the quality of the building around all these facades, all the sides actually have the high-quality materials that we're looking to impose on the whole building. Now, the final slide is actually of the retail. So you begin to see that the modernization of the retail component in general works very clear. We're actually carrying that and revitalizing what's actually happening on the retail as well. Each retail component really starts to have their own address. Crunch gets their highlight of elements, you know. We begin to really activate that street, so we really begin to see how this is going to revitalize the existing retail. That's our true intent. The use of materials is carrying the same way, what we're carrying from the modern multifamily building, we're going to carry over to this retail as well. We really want everybody to come here and visit, that this is going to be, it may be an old, an older retail spot, but it's going to be a new retail spot. It's a new summer town center we'd like to kind of create here. And that's our vision, and that's the Kaplan vision and Levin's vision at the same time.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, you've heard the presentation from our professionals, from our principals, from tenants, about why this is necessary, about the efforts to release it, about the efforts to find an alternate to an anchor, what that means for the center, and what it would look like. And we appreciate yours and the board's and your professionals' attention, and we'd certainly be available for questions, but I also know you want to open it up to the public. But we rest at this point in time.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'd like to thank all of the people who presented tonight for a very thorough, clear presentation, very understandable, and addresses a lot of aspects. So would like to thank you for that. Before we open to the public, I'm going to ask Peter to reiterate the rules for anybody who may have forgotten or who has come in late.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for the record, this is now would be the public portion of the presentation. Each member of the public would be permitted three minutes to make any comments concerning the presentation. The board does reserve the right to limit or end public comment, should the public comments become repetitive or unproductive. It's further noted that the public comment section is not structured as a question-and-answer session. Thus, neither the board nor the presenter will provide a response to any questions made by the public. Instead, the board will listen and focus on the comments being made by the public, as this is your opportunity to provide input on the presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. So I'm going to give Christine a minute to get the clocks in order, since the power cord was the same. Oh, thanks, Christine. So with that, I make a motion to open to the public for any comment related to the Levin properties and Kaplan presentation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion is open to the public.
And any member of the public approaching the podium, if you could just state your names, spell your last name for the record, and give us your address. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for your time. Gentlemen, with your presentation, I thank you for your presentation. My name is Mark Maris. I live at 179 Wilson Road, Somerset. I've been in the community for 21 years. I've been a member of the EMT squad and have retired from that service. I'm also a teaching professional. What I see is a very complete myopic view of our community. Repurposing this property is essential to help rebuild this community. But what has not been addressed by any of the members that have provided witness tonight is what are we going to do about accelerating traffic on Easton Avenue at the present time? What are we going to do about 200 units of potential people with children? 200 units of potential automobile traffic that can and cannot get in and out of the plaza presently? How are we going to take and deal with the overload on our schools that will take place because of the potential of several hundred children going into a school district that is now overworked? What we have here, not only by the planning board, but by this group trying to develop this retail space into more residential, is an increase in population density. I didn't move here to be urbanized in a suburban environment, as one of the witnesses has spoken. I've been here to help develop this community. The planning that was supposed, master-planned, that was supposed to have been initiated 10 years ago, has not been ascribed to as it was illustrated 10 years ago. There has been no development for any form of recreation for the community that lives here now. There is no development of facilities to facilitate movement through our community. Easton Avenue is the same piece of junk it was when I moved here 20 years ago. However, the truck traffic and the traffic on Easton on any given day makes that avenue very dangerous, extremely unpopular to drive from. We only have two exits, landing lane and the junction at 287, both of which are overworked. Any time of the day, you have difficulty entering or exiting those two areas. This will increase that traffic on Easton Avenue, on JFK. It's not going to decrease any of that traffic. What this board needs to do to service our community is look long-term. This project here, great scope for the development of this project and making money for these principles, not for this community. The development of this particular Rutgers Plaza needs to take place in such a fashion to look beyond the next year, beyond the next five years, beyond the next 25 years into our next generation.
We are going to stick to the times, so thank you for your comment.
I appreciate your time, gentlemen, ladies, gentlemen. I appreciate your proposal. I think you need to go back to work.
Levin wants us to believe that the Kmart site is no longer as viable for retail as it has been for many, many decades. Dress Barn, Radio Shack, and Kmart went bankrupt, so the loss of those tenants isn't a location issue. Subsequently, it appears Levin let this site go into disrepair, making it a very undesirable place for new tenants to set up shop. July 27th, Levin Management News Release states, quote, "Amid ongoing supply chain disruption, rising inflation, and well-documented labor changes, the retail industry and the commercial real estate product that supports it continues to see notable post-pandemic momentum." Contrary to what Mr. Wizniewski, Mr. Singer, and Mr. Otto said tonight, Levin CFO Matthew K. Harding said, quote, "Demand for quality location for new stores and pad sites remains strong through the first half of 2022. Continuing the positive trend for brick and mortar seen in 2021, national brands and franchises are expanding their footprints, while momentum among independent retailers speaks to an influx of startups as well as established concepts. Expanding operations are moving to improve location. Across the board, tenants are capitalizing on space availabilities that came online due to the pandemic." Mr. Harding went on to say, "Yet despite uncertainties, retail remains on a positive trajectory. Ultimately, people like the experience of shopping in physical stores, and they are doing so. This benefits retailers as well as the shopping centers that house them," end quote. Wall Street Journal recently reported that, quote, "U.S. retail vacancy fell to 6.1% in the second quarter, the lowest level in 15 years. It reported more stores opened than closed in the U.S. last year for the first time since 1995, and some analysts say they expect the trend to continue this year even with the recession fears rising." Lastly, the article stated that "most developers are opting to renovate outdated properties rather than building new ones, and retail sales growth in physical bricks and mortar stores is actually growing faster than e-commerce this year," end quote. Levin wants us to believe they can't find tenants for the Kmart site because retailers dying. But on the other hand, the Wall Street Journal and Levin's own CFO are saying that retail is doing better now than in many years. You can't have it both ways. Levin needs to live up to their own website hype that states, quote, "They consistently rank among the nation's leading retail estate service firms," end quote. Do your job, Levin. Give us what we need, retail where we need it. More residential is fine, but not on property zoned for retail or commercial. We need sites where we can buy clothing, home goods, and other items." Thank you for your time.
Truth and truthful intentions were mentioned here by a couple of the esteemed speakers. Truth is a very interesting concept, especially when it pertains to future, which none of us have really seen. However, since it was brought up, let me speculate a little bit about possible alternative truth about this site. Levin may yet, and obviously is submitting, an alternate plan as a compromise to have retail on the first floor and residential above that. This would just reinforce our understanding, as well as Levin's, that retail is still very viable for this site. This option would still set the precedent, allowing residential on retail and commercial sites throughout Franklin by other property owners. That means thousands of more residents where retail and commercial belongs, increased traffic issues, stress on our infrastructure, and crowded schools, all resulting in higher taxes for everyone and severely reducing our quality of life. Based on comments on several social media sites in a petition signed by more than 2,000 residents, it's unquestionable that the overwhelming majority of people in Franklin do not want residential on the Kmart site. This Levin property is located in what is already the most densely populated area of Franklin. I committed that for 30 years, and I committed a lot of sins of the time when I was in the car. We also don't want a precedent to be set that allows every developer to ask for and receive the same treatment. This could result in having other properties rezoned for residential complexes to be built throughout Franklin, where there are now strip malls and shopping centers. It's not our job to bail out the billion-dollar corporation at the expense of our community's quality of life. If we allow Levin's plan, it likely will be the first domino to fall. Many residential complexes would be built on what will become former retail or commercial sites in Franklin. I recommend that we stick to the master plan and build residential where residential is supposed to be, and commercial and retail where they are supposed to be. Thank you for your time.
Okay. My name is Deanna Lux, and I live at 51 Patriots Way, Somerset. There are two items I wish to address tonight. First, as I drive around Somerset County and surrounding counties, I have noticed several Levin retail centers, including in Bridgewater, North Plainfield, Rowden, Somerset, Wachung, Edison, Middlesex, and South Plainfield, to name a few. Stated on Levin's management's website, it operates 120 shopping centers across a broad range of markets in five key states. On July 28th, 2022, Levin boasted a solid past six months of brick and mortar retail. I question the need to build a high-density residential property when Levin boasts such a success story in retail centers. I live in Ward 2. There are some strip malls in my ward. I am truly concerned that if this board or the council accedes to Levin's rezoning request, you will open the floodgates to other developers hoping to build high-density rental properties atop or in place of strip malls in my ward, as well as in other wards in Franklin. We need more quality shopping in Franklin, so we don't need to drive out of town to neighboring towns like Hillsborough and Bridgewater to buy clothes, furniture, and more. Surely Levin seems to have plenty of retail connections to bring more shopping to Franklin. The second item is more of a question, but I know I'm not supposed to ask a question. A few months ago... A few months ago, Mr. Rosimi wrote on social media that he was in favor of replacing the Kmart building with residential rental properties. Mr. Chairman, since you have publicly made your position known already, which may be one reason why the developer decided to come to the planning board for this informal hearing, I am hoping you will recuse yourself on decisions related to this property as it pertains to Levin's request. Thank you.
Eric Pearlman, 105 Hickory Road, Somerset. I've been here for over 50 years, so I do remember Grants, and I remember the little diner inside Grants that I used to go to. Actually, I remember when it was just a hill there, so that's how old I am. Anyway, Mr. Wizniewski talked about trends, and, you know, we heard one side of the trend. A lot of it was mixed use, but like some of the other folks have mentioned, there is trends in retail actually happening now as well. Let me just read you a little piece of a study I read just the other day, and it summarizes as this. "Yet despite uncertainties, retail remains on a positive trajectory. Ultimately, people like the experience of shopping in physical stores, and they are doing so. This benefits retailers as well as shopping centers that house them." That study was published by Levin Management. Levin Management also had some success recently at Blue Star Cinema Shopping Center, not cinema, Blue Star Shopping Center, where they got an increase in retail as well, very similar to Rutgers Plaza. I also want to let you know that I talked to a gentleman from CBRE, which is one of the largest commercial real estate companies in the United States, probably the top one. And off the record, I asked him about the location of Rutgers Plaza and if it's viable for retail, and he said 100% yes. So as far as Levin being a good partner to Franklin Township and doing a good faith attempt at making that space leasable, I'm not seeing it. They let Kmart go to pot after the building, so who's going to lease that? It's visually, it's not leasable. They only did a section of the frontage. They upgraded it, only on one section of the shopping center, which didn't make any sense, especially if you want to get either a big box or whatever in that Kmart spot. And we're not asking for big box. It could be any, any type of retail. As far as the configuration of it, these construction firms knock things down and put them up constantly. So if the frontage is not conducive to, you know, Walmart standard, it could be changed. That's just the way it is. The master plan, that's a disappointment because that is not supposed to be touched, and I see there's amendments to it online constantly. And now we're talking about, real quick, if there wasn't so much warehousing and other residential development going up in this town, maybe we wouldn't be having this discussion. Thank you.
I am Sophia Henderson. I am the owner of 18 Triplet Road. I wanted to just touch on the gentleman that left, the one that lived in Burnsville, that he wanted to, they wanted housing. None of those housings, I guarantee, in Burnsville would be affordable housing. Number two, we talked about the traffic. Reason why I want to discuss traffic, I work for the local trauma center. I'm the one who, you guys call 911, and I go out and send them out. Do I know about the traffic in Franklin? Yes, we get many accidents there on Eastern Avenue and JFK. Sometimes, most of the times when I speak to your, your police officers, we don't have crews available because they are busy. In 2020, we had 70,000 people in Franklin that lived in the town, and there aren't many ambulances and paramedic units to respond to Franklin, New Brunswick, South Brunswick, and the surrounding towns. It's all fun and games until one of you, your kids, your mother, your wife, needs an ambulance. And when we have all these people that are coming right there in that condensed one little area, it's going to impact our emergency medical services. It already impacted. When I first moved to this town, we had a rescue squad. We no longer have that, and we rely on Robert Woods Services. So, and those, does anyone know what a paramedic unit cost and a BLS unit cost? Thousands. It is going to impact us. Four-story unit, housing, I can't go out in my backyard now and feel comfortable because I'm going to be scared someone's looking. People that live, let live on New Brunswick Road, I feel bad for you guys. That apartment building is going to be right there in front of you. Again, I implore you, I beg you to think about what we're doing. It's nice that we're putting these people, we're giving them money, but what about doing something for us, for our town? I ask you, I implore you, I beg you to think about this before we do it. It looks good short term, but in the long time, we, the residents, not the people, not these men in suits, they're not going to be impacted because they don't live here. We do. Thank you for your time.
Edward Caraway, 533 New Brunswick Road. With the exception of Mr. Thomas and possibly Mr. Chase, I doubt that any of you know me, but from a perspective point of view, I serve two terms on the zoning board of adjustment, including time as vice chair, so I bring the perspective of sitting on your side of the table. One of the things I learned during my time on the board is that information from the public was very useful, and in fact, in some cases, it was actually critical to the decisions that the board made. So I urge you to not give lip service to, but to give serious consideration to everything that's said by the public. I read all the documentation for the original application to the zoning board. I read the application, I read all these staff reports, and I have to admit, I was really surprised when I saw this case here, because it doesn't belong here. This case, the original application, definitely should reside with the zoning board of adjustment. It's not a planning board case, but there's a reason that it's here. I call it an end run. There are C variances, there's D variances, and apparently the governing body is not too happy with this, so Mr. Wizniewski actually said that. He didn't want to go to the zoning board because he's afraid he's going to get knocked down. Well, that's wrong. An application should go to the place where the application belongs, and that application belongs there and not here. If you have an applicant at a specific site looking for specific variances, they should be going to the zoning board for those specific variances. What we seem to have here is an applicant who's asking you to change the zoning law for his convenience. There's no reason for that. He should follow the procedure of going to the zoning board the way he originally did until he got scared that he was going to lose. What he's trying to do, and if you let him do it, it's blatantly wrong. Thank you.
Terry Thorson, 18 Lebed Drive, Somerset. We all know that Somerset County is studying MOV road because of the number of accidents that occur on it. We had two deaths within the last six months on Anwell Road, right in that vicinity, right near Foxwood Drive, which is the next road down from JFK. The other thing people are in considering, and I didn't see it on any of the diagrams, was the driveway that goes from JFK Boulevard into the proposed development. Did you ever try to make a left-hand turn out of there? It's absolutely impossible. If this project goes through, what's going to have to happen is you're going to have to put a traffic light there, or you have to cut that off completely and only let people go out on our, on Eastern Avenue. I noticed they mentioned the height of the building was four stories, no feet, because we do have a regulation about how high the buildings could be. I also noticed they were talking about reducing the impermeable surface. Are they reducing it down to the 60% that we have as mandated in this town? Somehow I doubt that. Charging stations. I know the state mandates four for every 100 parking spaces. I know they said they were going to have more, no mention of how many more. I like the idea that we put them in now because it does cause more retrofit. Solar panels. Are these buildings going to have solar panels on the top? Right now, we're going through energy aggr, I was going to say aggravation, aggregation in the township. We're looking at that right now. So if these buildings do go up, they should have solar panels on the top. I feel sorry for the people using the pools because with two four-story buildings on either side, you're not going to get any sun. You have a green area for functions. Who monitors that? Does the town give permits for that? Does a developer give permits for that? You can't just have people milling around in a green area in the middle of a development and not expect something is going to happen. Also, there's McDonald's diagonally across the street. I don't know if that McDonald's is going to relocate or if they're going to compete with each other. And Franklin is very inclusive. We are a very diverse community. This seems to isolate people in one area. And one other thing I should say, if you're thinking you're going to get more business for Stop &amp; Shop, Stop &amp; Shop is going to have to reduce their prices. They're 25% more than ShopRite, and that's why people go to ShopRite instead. Thank you very much.
Alex Strauss, 285 Haslow Way, Somerset. Since I can't ask any questions, I guess I have to assume, for instance, that this is going to be lightweight wood construction, perhaps? And if it is, well, Mr. Wizniewski, when you ran the assembly, I'm sure you remember the fires, the fire at Avalon in 2015, and before that, up in Edgewater, and before that, there was another one, I think in 2000. Of course, we had the Bound Brook Fire in 2020. And Mr. Wizniewski, you were very active. You sponsored a bill in 2015, 4882, 4882, that said that you would ban these kind of buildings over three stories tall or more than 36,000 square feet per floor. Well, 250,000 square feet divided by four, that's, what is it, 62,000, 63,000 square feet. Okay? So what changed? I don't know. Also, there are a lot of things about the building. Why is there no entrance on the side closest to a lot of the stores? They want to, they don't want people going out to the stores, okay? Why is it that the parking doesn't seem to have any security? Is that like free catalytic converters? They're calling it the Cosmopolitan with a view of maybe McDonald's, okay? They want to eliminate Rutgers, Rutgers Plaza. They named Rutgers, okay? I find that ironic because Levin, if you go to Douglas College, Douglas Campus, there's the Philip J. Levin Theater, and on Livingston Campus, there's the Janus H. Levin Building, okay? So pretty ironic there. And then skirting the building in order to go around the building, trucks and everything will have to skirt the residences in order to access the other stores. That's not good either. They're just, a lot of problems, a lot of problems. And it took all this time to build a sidewalk down to Eastern Avenue. They had decades to do that. Really, really. Stop &amp; Shop? Well, you know, I'd like to have an extra hour on Sunday, please. Just keep it simple, 10 o'clock straight across. But Levin keeps those diamonds in the middle of Stop &amp; Shop lot, okay? How about eliminating those? I saw a woman run over them with her BMW because they took away the trees. That's not keeping up the plaza, okay? And mixed use, mixed use, okay? Franklin Greens, now called the Park at Franklin, that's really mixed use because people access Rutgers Plaza by cutting, cutting through the fence. There's holes in the fence. 648 units built in 1968, okay? It's right there. It's right there. And then down the street, you have The Grove, almost 400 units off of, off of Eastern and Dematte. You have 200 units at Eastern North. You have some apartments, okay? And you really have mixed use. So let's stop the threats about what's going to happen if this isn't built. Thank you.
Bo Cottle, 25 Spring Street, Hallian. So I heard a lot of stuff, but the only thing that's really sticking with me is I haven't seen anything like this since Jack Morris was trying to build on Bennett's Lane. It's kind of like Back to the Future a little bit. But here's the issue. Kate, I apologize, I don't know your last name, she made the comment that this is like a one-time thing, and it will not be precedent-setting, and it will not force the town to do other things. We all know that's garbage because Peter Lamford and people like that, who probably has a statue out front, okay, loves, part of their policy, part of their policy is to walk in and remind you of the precedents this board and the zoning board set constantly. Okay, so that's the first thing. Well, you did it for them. That's, that's how he always does it. You watch it, you can see it on videos. So all I'm saying is, I want the boards, both boards, to be consistent. Thank you.
So hello, I am Catherine Sportak, the infamous Catherine Sportak, the organizer of Save JFK petition. Hello to everyone. Yes, hi. I made a lot of friends. I walked miles with my dog in the freezing cold meeting my neighbors. We got over 1,100 signatures, and I cannot tell you how angry our residents are over this. I think I've met four people who, two were ambivalent and two were okay, out of hundreds. This is a hot topic, this is a hot-button topic. So Eastern Avenue, right now, ranks number three of the worst corridors in the state. It's so bad that Somerset County got a million-dollar grant to study traffic. So I'd like to know how adding 200 apartments with potentially 400 cars will lower or improve traffic. It won't, is a high-density corner. There's no way to add on East, because it's got a canal, so that means all the traffic's going to go to JFK. We're going to have to need an extra lane, we're going to lose our bike path, we're going to have a highway in our backyard. This is not suburbia. That is a city. That is not what we signed up for. Also, as of today, this has nothing to do with apartments. If you go on apartments.com, there are 453 available apartments in Somerset. Google it. I challenge you. There's no need for apartments. What there is a need for is restaurants and stores. Why do we have to leave town? And you know, if this does get built, I'd like to ask my fellow citizens to boycott it, but I don't have to, because they're not going to be able to get to it because there's going to be gridlock all around Rutgers Plaza. Oh, I'm sorry, the Cosmopolitan, because that's not classy enough. But good luck to you in filling that because everyone will leave. Oh, Catherine Sportak, 6 Larson Road. And my petition is on change.org. It's called Save JFK.
Okay, seeing nobody else coming forward, I'll move to close the public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So we have, we're done. We have fulfilled our duty to, to listen to this tonight. I want to thank, once again, the applicant and all their testimony. I'd like to thank the public. You know, concerned public is, is always a good thing, and so I thank the public for their comments, and have a great night. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.